Hello, everyone. It's 5:32. We'll call the Mashpee School Committee meeting to order for October 16th, 2024. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
To ratify the United States of Nebraska into a republic where which is stand one nation under law, in a little liberty and justice for all.
Can they come back every month?
Right.
Good job, guys.
I think you guys did a better job than we did.
Yes, 100%.
The Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor many generations of Wampanoan people who live and have sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. I just want to make an announcement that Dan is participating via Zoom call. He was feeling ill and did not want to share with the rest of the committee tonight, and we do appreciate his consideration. But he will be on the big screen up there, and we'll make sure that we call for him. So, thank you, Dan. Next item of business is to ratify the agenda as it's presented to you for October 16th. Do we have any changes? I believe that Representative from the Mashpee Wampanoan Travel Education Department will not be here tonight. That is one court adjustment to the agenda. Are there any other changes that you're aware of that we should know?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to ratify the agenda for October 16th with the amendment as discussed.
One second.
Okay, motion by Kathy, something by Kelly. Any further discussion? Hang on. Dan, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, but it's a little complicated.
In regard to the agenda, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. So it's unanimous. Thank you. Next item of business, we have our young energetic kids from the Casey Coombs School.
Yes, we sure do. You are in for quite a show. Hi, I'm Principal O'Brien. Thank you for inviting us tonight, and we have some pretty great rock stars here to share about the Coombs School. Parents, thank you for taking the time and bringing your kids to present for us tonight.
Can I interrupt you for a moment? If the parents want to stand behind us to get pictures, you're more than welcome to.
I love that. Thank you. Any other parents want to stand? Feel free. So tonight, our first part of the presentation is about our PBIS program. We thought it made sense to follow up from the last meeting we had to really explain what that looks like. And then the second part of this is to share the data that really supports why we do this. So I'm going to turn this section over to Mr. Preina and these amazing children.
Thank you, Principal O'Brien. Thank you, School Committee, for having us here today, and thank you for all the parents for coming in and supporting all the kids here today. So PBIS stands for Positive Behaviors Intervention and Supports. Something that KCCS is really, really passionate about is making sure that we all feel connected within our community and making sure that we exemplify those things day to day. So all of our students here all have a falcon egg in their pockets, I believe. These students here. Here you go, Nicola. So before we go on, can everybody, I'm going to put the microphone next to your face, just say your name and what grade you're in, okay?
Olivia, second grade.
Riley, second grade.
Natella, kindergarten.
Evelyn Miles, first grade.
Second grade.
Julia, second grade.
Arthur, kindergarten.
Jacob, first, second grade.
Malachi, second grade.
Otis, second grade.
So these incredible kids, all the second graders actually have been doing the daily announcements over Google video. So they're actually pretty used to be in front of the camera and being on TV because every morning, kids are on TV doing the Falcon Pledge and talking about the PBIS program. Our PBIS program is about marking the moment. When students do things that are following the Falcon Five, like being safe, being responsible, respectful, being caring, and being ready, adults are able to give students a falcon egg. Falcon eggs are these really cool shiny coins that are given directly to a kid. So students, could you think about a time and the reason why you were given a falcon egg?
At gym, I was using the tools right.
So you were using, you were being responsible, and you were given a falcon egg? All right. Arthur, what about you?
I helped a child when someone fell down, and I helped her up.
Somebody gave you a falcon egg. Nicola?
Because I was following the Falcon Pledge and being responsible at lunch and specials.
Because I was being caring.
I got a falcon egg because I was the only one doing the breathing.
In the morning, we do Calm Classroom to get ready to learn, which is one of our Falcon Five.
I was being respectful in the hallways.
I was being kind at recess.
I was being responsible in the gym.
So students are marked those moments, and they are given a falcon egg. Now, you may be curious, what do kids do with falcon eggs afterwards? So what they end up doing?
Put them in the nest.
Yes, we put them in the nest. So each classroom marks the moment, and then each classroom has their own nest. That's actually part of an incentive program that's a community, like, classroom incentive. And then where do you put this nest when it's full?
You put it in the big nest.
You put it in the big nest. This is the big nest. So right here, this is the falcon nest for the whole school. So when this is filled up, sometimes, who shows up?
Thunder.
And who's thunder?
The falcon.
The falcon shows up, and we do a whole school-wide celebration based on the positive things because the things that happen at school all combine to each other, and then we celebrate our success. That really embodies community, and everybody's a part of those things. Because at some point during the day, someone was given a positive comment, given a falcon egg, and they've all contributed to our community, and that's why we celebrate. That's pretty cool, huh? Well, you're pretty cool kids. Something that we do every single morning, and the kids know by heart, is the Falcon Pledge. So in a moment, our kids here are going to say the Falcon Pledge. We say it with pride because these are the words that we live by here at KCCS. Ready?
Today I will do my very best, working to earn a head toward the net. Being responsible, working late, caring and respectful all through the day. I will achieve excellence, KCT captain, really strong.
So that's how we start every single day, is making sure that we all know that we're part of the community. Sorry, my back's to you. That you're also part of the community, and thank you so much for joining us tonight, and making sure that everybody here feels valued and respected. And then when those things come up that sometimes aren't so great, we remember when things were really good, and that we can build back our relationships because we've started with relationships. Can I get another round of applause for the kids, please? And then part two is with Principal O'Brien. Part of our PBIS program is also collecting information to make sure we know how things work.
Thank you. I cannot even compare or compete with these guys. I'm really sorry about that. They are just too adorable. But it is really-
The parents are taking pictures of you.
I know. Thanks, thanks. But it is important that we share that data and tell the story behind PBIS, and it isn't just about an egg. It's how this works. So really, we look at this data, and through the work we have done so far with the May Institute we started last year, we really started using this data collection system that is put forth by the PBIS program. It's called SWISS, and that allows us to identify areas in the school where we need to give explicit instruction. It also recognizes the time of the day that we might have challenges within their school, compares days of the week. Days change, and it's really interesting to see where we might have some spikes in challenging behaviors or just needing that extra support. And we also are able to identify specific students that might need additional needs and supports through this database. It is an important part of the program. And you might have seen this triangle before. This is used to really, it guides us. In typical results, when we put in Tier One program, which PBIS is a Tier One, we look at about 80% of all of the students are responding to that Tier One intervention. The second group is needing a secondary support or a Tier Two, and that's about 15% typically. And then we have that Tier Three, which is more intense supports if that Tier One and Tier Two are not working, and that's about 5%. That's typical. So I wanted to share with you the data from last year. So we started this last year. We really rolled out the SWISS program in November, and we started tracking all of our data. And all of the staff at the Coombs School has access to enter data on student behavior and, you know, culture of the school and what's going on. So if we take a look, this is all incidents that were reported. This is major, major means in our situation that someone might have been referred to the office. These are minor incidences that teachers handle within the classroom, but we're keeping track of that so we know where we can intervene. If we look at all, that came up last year as 82.84% of our students fell in that green responding to that Tier One intervention. And from all students in the red, it was less than that 5%. So are we responding to that positive behavior interventions and support? Absolutely. I wanted to share this year's data so far, and again, these triangles are beautiful. So that's really why we wanted to share this. Again, we're looking at, right now, from the beginning, we started on day one with the SWISS data collection, and we're at 94.21% of our students are responding to that Tier One intervention. Does PBIS work? Absolutely. We're building a solid foundation for our kids, and it's really showing. And I think anecdotally, I just need to share, when we have parents call and say, can I use those eggs at home? We say, sure, absolutely, because it is making a difference for the kids. And if we look at that little tiny part up at the top, it is about 2% in the red. And those are students that might need some extra support. And that green is students that have zero or one referral, whether it is to the office or the teacher. And sometimes, it's like just needing a redirection that could be entered. So the data certainly supports this. I wanted to put a couple other pieces or slides up here about some of the sample data. This is the number of referrals by time, and again, the scale is really small, so it looks like it's much greater than it is, but it's tiny, really. But we noticed that the most challenging time in the day are during our transitions. It's during the transitions to specials, back from special, from lunch, back into the classroom. So that's where we can build those supports, during those transitional times when kids are settled in class and learning, that's when we see things come down. Of course, at the end of the day, it looks really good. One of the other things we monitor with the SWISS data is it captures the location of where there could be challenges within the school. So again, this is the library, the music room, the office, the bus. And we notice it's not that dramatic. Again, it's a pretty low scale. The hallway seems to be a place where we have some challenges, not that our students would run in the halls, right? No, or use a Level Two voice in the hall. No running, right, Nicola? That's right. So we do monitor that, though. So again, we can give those lessons, and we can provide the supports we need for kids. Average referrals per day per month. And again, we started the year, so many of our students haven't been in school before. Pre-K, K, a lot of our K students, first time they're experiencing it. We saw 12 referrals, a little bit more, 13 referrals per day in October. We're not even at four, and it's halfway through the month. So is that PBIS program working? Absolutely. So this is why we want to invest that time and our energy in something and using the data to help support it. This last slide here, and these are just, like I said, samples, this is referrals by students, and this is really important in our practice because we do want to know who is struggling and what kind of instances. We have a wonderful counseling staff. We have a school psychologist. We have so many resources, and we want to make sure those are directed in the right place. So knowing who those students are is really critical in this, so we can certainly intervene and help. And we do that along with parent support. So once we get down here, if we need to enlist our parents, we do that. It also could lead to a referral, but we're not at that point yet. So it's not just collecting data, it's how do we use it? So an example here is we knew the buses were a little bit uptick. We've got some bus slips. So here is, what did kindergarten do today? Nicole? Yes, we were going to be really safe, and we had a bus driver come to school today with the big bus. Some of our kindergarteners who are driven to school every day have never once been on a bus. They have a field trip tomorrow. How do they know how to behave? They don't unless we teach them and tell them. And that's really what this is about, recognizing where and when. This is our voice check. I'm sure we've all seen this. What is this? Our quiet coyote. We know what that means, and we have a scale for our voice checks that really, when we're in the cafeteria, that is a Level One, which is just a soft voice. But the playground, or if you're in trouble, you can definitely go up to a three, which is that calling voice. So that's how we use some of that data. I do want to give a shout out to Beth Segal, who is our BCBA, our Board Certified Behavior Analyst, who has put together some pretty unbelievable lessons because we collect the data, we use the data, and then we have to do some lessons, and this did work on mine. So I'm sorry if that didn't come up. Let's see if this one will. No. But to give you an idea, here is a poster that was put together, and these are put around school. And these are the Falcon Five and what it looks like to be a Falcon Five leader in the bathroom specifically. And there are some that are in the hall. The whole lesson for the field trip is how to get on the bus, how to sit on the bus, the volume that you should use on the bus, every expectation for the buses. So since they're going on the field trip, it's also how to behave on the field trip, and then how to reboard the bus. So all of those things explicitly taught, but we know it's an issue because we can see the data. They need to be taught first. It's hard to hold someone accountable if they don't know what that expectation is. And really, that is how Kenneth C. Coombs School students are Falcon Five leaders. We bring the Falcon Five along with PBIS, collect data, use the data to make the best decisions for our students. So, guys, great job tonight. Thank you for being here. And yeah, I think we need a picture, and thank you, Mr. Preina. Does anyone have a question?
Dan, do you have any questions?
My only question, not being very knowledgeable, just wanted to first off congratulate the students. Thank you so much for being there tonight. A great presentation you guys put on. You truly are the rock stars of the Falcon Five here. But I will say, having a role in ACCS, it is such a powerful tool, and thank you guys for utilizing it just because it not only obviously plays out within the whole walls of the school, but at other events, rec sports, all of these places, they're a whole bunch that carry that on, and it's a really great school setup. So just to kind of gratitude on the way you guys are doing this system, so thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Would it be possible, you don't have to come back and present again, but in the fall, like, or at the end of the year, can we see those triangle graphs again?
Absolutely.
I think it's neat, and I would like to see if you can keep that green.
Keep, try and keep the triangles from you, because Mrs. O'Brien lives for her triangles.
Share the triangles. I want to see them at the end of the year just because, I'm curious, because, I mean, we're in October, and I'm glad that it's where it's at now, but I think it'd be really interesting to see the end of the year and really see after a year of doing it, now you're in your second year, what that looks like.
Absolutely, and that's one thing I love about the SWISS program is they archive every single year, so you can hear it year by year, which is really nice. So we look at the whole school, but then be able to drill down to that individual student. It really gives us the whole broad spectrum, and that's it. But we can do that.
Thank you.
Brian, do you have any questions or comments?
Is it just Cooms that has this program, or do they have this program at Quashnae in the high school, too?
There are, it's not the specific PBIS program, but there is a positive support program in place. I think we have followed the, with our work with May Institute, we have been following that, but there have always been supports, like the school store, for example, the right choice tickets are all based on a positive support program.
I'm going to get this picture, and you all need to get in there.
Okay, I just want to make one quick comment. One, I wanted to thank the kids for all the hard work of following the Falcon Five and participating in this program. You're doing a fantastic job. Keep it up. I want to thank the faculty and administration for moving this forward. You're doing a fantastic job, and keep it up also. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you again next year.
All right, School Committee's coming to join you for the picture. And Mrs. O'Brien, you're getting it.
All right, go ahead and share the picture.
What are you guys doing? I'm holding the egg. Everybody, everybody up under. Can you see? All right, one, two, three. Don't move yet. I'm getting very polite, but now you're done. Two, three. Oh, that is a good-looking group right there. We are so proud of you.
The falcon eggs don't work, but each school has a different kind of program, each program.
Every-
I'll listen to the podcast. The next one coming up, we'll be talking about.
Just keep going, my friend. Speaking of that microphone.
So as you are leaving, I just do want to say one thing, that we are extremely appreciative of what the parents are doing in this program, because without your support, this would not happen. So thank you.
It's on TV.
Let's see. Next item of business is the Mashpee Middle High School, Class of 2027, has a trip proposal, the Universal Studios Grand Bash Senior Tour. I'm not sure who's presenting.
The class officers.
The class officers? If you'll come to the table and state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Christina Fraser. I am the advisor to the Class of 2027.
Hi, I'm Anna Blackburn, and I'm the president of Class of 2027. I'm Quinlan Donovan, and I'm the vice president of our class.
I'm Fernanda Lima, and I'm the secretary of our class.
I'm James Dean, and I'm the treasurer of the class.
And today, we're going to be proposing a trip to Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida during April School Vacation in 2027. By going on this trip, we will be going to the four Universal Parks, which is Universal Studios, Islands of Adventure, Epic Universe, which is a new one that's going to come in 2025, and Volcano Bay. The students will be able to choose also from a form, from a list of educational opportunities to participate on this trip. Students will also participate in the Grad Bash Night, which is where all the seniors get to stay overnight in the park with no one else there and to just go to all the rides with no, like, other people. What is the Grad Bash? It's a culminating high school event for seniors and an opportunity to make lifelong memories together. You have access to the four parks, and the park closes at 4:00 PM, so only the seniors will be able to have access to the park overnight. You will be able to go on all the rides, attractions, and street entertainment. They will be open all night long. And this is a little video from Universal's site.
Can you just hit escape on the keyboard? There you go.
There you go.
Now I'm handing it over to our vice president, Quinlan Donovan.
Hi.
Hi. In regards to this trip, I think it's important to say that there are educational opportunities and an aspect of that through the trip. We all have an opportunity to apply for it, and it's $25 a student. To choose which one we want to do would be something we would do closer to the date or after it is approved. These next few slides will just give you a couple examples of some of the programs that the Grad Bash offers for students. The first one is the Transformers rollout. This is an engineering program where students will learn the principles of six degrees freedom, which is a ride, and get a hands-on analysis. Then they'll use these skills to reconstruct the ride's vehicles, motion sequences. All of these programs follow a standard. And this particular program aligns with the educational standards of career and technical and math. Another opportunity could be Hollywood Rip Ride Rocket Science, which is a lesson in physics. This aligns with the standards for science and math. The Mummy Dig Site Detective puts students in the middle of a strange series of events on an attraction where they use scientific observation skills to find evidence and draw conclusions. This follows the standards of social studies and science. The Jurassic Paleobotany is where students go on a scavenger hunt looking for the plants around the Jurassic Park, and then they compare their findings to actual fossils and make identifications. They work in groups to photograph plants, plot their locations, and experience scientific discovery. This aligns with science standards. The Kong Troll Panel, which is a play on words, I'm not just saying that wrong. It brings students face-to-face with sophisticated positioning system of the park where they can, and like, learn engineering principles and basically translate this into the rides that they're looking at. This aligns with the standards for math and career and technical education. Another opportunity could be the Business Learning Series, which is in partnership with CNBC, and it's comprised of three targeted learning modules that offer an introduction to leadership in the workplace, career exploration, and business development. Just a little video.
I learned something in the classroom is one thing, but for students who actually experience it is another. Being able to really understand something that still they actually do. It just provides a great opportunity to do that.
It's something that even if that person was energetic and able to relate with people.
Very interactive, and you know what he was talking about, he had really portrayed the information well. He's been very well coordinated, he's got plenty of ideas, ideas, and skills, and games, and is certainly thoughtful.
I will definitely encourage my peers about this program. Absolutely.
Okay. This specific class or program was developed and endorsed by DECA, and it helps students learn dynamic marketing strategies and promote leadership and give them really real-world, like, examples and experiences for this. And our last educational opportunity that the Grad Bash offers is storytelling. It starts with a hero. This was created in partnership with Full Sail University, and it gives the students the opportunity to explore an outline of the hero's journey and discover visual and language arts between, behind storytelling. So it goes into like, English character development and hero archetypes to identify and portray the archetypes using framing techniques. So the students are really getting that experience. I'll now hand this off to our secretary, or vice president, or our president, Anna. I'm the vice president.
We recently took a survey. We took the survey on Tuesday, so we got as many people to participate in as possible to see if our class was interested. We took one last year and we had 90 yeses and eight nos. And this year, from the amount of people that have taken it, we got 54 students who said yes and only eight who said no.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Were other destinations presented or was this the only destination you guys asked about?
Like, Universal.
Yeah, were there other trip options or was this the only?
No, this is the only one we, like, presented to them.
Okay, thank you.
This would not be during our senior week. We would also be doing our senior week separate trips. So this would be more like the DC trip.
How many students are in the class of 2027?
Hun.
No, it's bigger than that.
It's bigger?
Yeah. Like 108.
I haven't checked since last year.
104? Right now.
Okay, so the approximate trip dates would be during April break in 2027. So it'd be April 22nd to the 26th. We would be scheduled to come back on the Monday, which is a school day, but if we were to come back on the Sunday, it would be a lot more costly. School vacation is April 17th through 25th. So we won't be there the entire school vacation, just in case some people can't go. Now I'm going to hand it off to our secretary.
So our itinerary for the days we are there. On Thursday, April 22nd, we will meet at the school and load the buses to go to Logan Airport. And once we arrive at the airport, we will check in. Part of our meal money will go to the airport food. And then the plane will depart and land in Orlando. We will get our luggage and then we're going to go on to the buses to the resort. And then after we settle ourselves in the resort, we will go to the Universal City Walk. And we will have dinner at the Toothsome. Then the next day on Friday, we will have a breakfast with a voucher at the resort. Then we will go to Universal Studios and we will have lunch in the park. We will go to the Islands of Adventures and eat the dinner inside the park. Then the next day, we will have breakfast with a voucher at the resort. We will go to Island, Islands of Adventure, lunch in the park. We will go to Universal Studios and we will have dinner in the park. Then the following day on Sunday, we will have breakfast with a voucher at the resort. We will go to Volcano Bay, have lunch in the park, and have dinner in the park. And we will return to the resort, because that day is the Grad Bash. And it may change, but as of now, that's when we're planning to do it. And then on Monday, we will return to the hotel, have breakfast at the park. We will check out of the resort and load the buses and leave. And we will eat, we'll go to the airport and we will eat and then we will depart. And once we get back in Boston, we will load onto the bus and arrive to the school and then go home. I will pass the mic to Jimmy Dean.
So the estimated cost, if we have 80 people, would be a lot less than if we had like, 70 or 65 people. And it would cost more to do like, a single person in a room than to have two or three. And then four people in a room would be the least expensive. So our arrangements for lodging will be made like, when we book the trip. And one of our four lodgings will be at the Universal Canibera Bay Beach Resort, Universal's Adventure Hotel, Universal's Endless Summer Resort, Surfside Inn and Suites, and then, or the Dockside Inn and Suites. So as of now, the plane tickets are not available for purchase. And we will like, buy the plane tickets with the company we are going on this trip with closer to 2027. But as of now, a trip from Orlando to Boston is $479 or $578, in between those two numbers. To fundraise for the trip, we will talk to the leaders of the DC trip and find ways to fundraise the ways that they did. And money each students earn goes towards their own trip cost in addition to the financial funds for the students in need. Conventional fundraising, like candy, pizza dough sales, bake sales and stuff like that, will be used for like, the, like, one of the fundraising opportunities. We could also do a raffle. So the suggested payment plan, which would start, if it got approved this December, would run all the way through till when we, like, the April before the trip, so we could use smaller amounts of money in like, a larger time to make it more cost-effective. I am now passing it to the president, Anna Blackburn.
So some additional information that we gathered on this trip is that the tickets to attend the Grad Bash will be released a year in advance, so we have an idea of how much they'll cost. Every person attending will see, receive a card with around $150 for food, and it's recommended to only spend around $25 a meal. We will go through Educational Destinations, which is a touring company that'll help us schedule and buy this, these tickets to this event. And they will help us plan the trip and make sure everything is accounted for. They also provide a tour director to help us in Universal. They also include five complimentary trips, but airfare is not included in these, which will be used for some of the chaperones, which is a 15 to one student ratio. We have a chaperone guide linked here. And the students will have to sign a contract of behavioral expectations before going on this trip to make sure that they are all behaving. And the students must be eligible to attend per the MPS Handout Field Trip Policies. And an administrator will also be present on this trip. The parent slash guardian informational meetings will be scheduled upon this trip being approved. And we will make accommodations for any disabilities or allergies for, so that we can make sure that everyone can go on this trip. The trip will have around, must have 40 to 42 attendees to be viable. So we need at least 40 people to come on this trip. I also want to add that even though Universal is mainly like, a amusement park, there's many other things to do there besides just the roller coasters. So for anyone that doesn't like to go on a roller coaster, like myself, I don't love to go on roller coasters, but I think it would be very fun and still a very good opportunity to go and spend time with all my friends. Some of the things that they include is a tour director, which I mentioned before. And they also include the chartered coach buses for us to take. They include the tolls, taxes, and daily maintenance fees for the drivers. Four-night hotel accommodations, 13 meals are also included. All sightseeing and special events and itinerary. Entrance fees when necessary, taxes and tragedies required for all included features. Trip departure briefing. Customized tour itinerary and baggage tags and all operations and planning charges. Some things that they don't include is passport fees, baggage handling at airports and hotels, excess baggage charges, forwarding of baggage, items of a personal nature such as snacks, laundry, room service, telephone calls, pay TV, movies, cables, et cetera. tragedies to travel tour directors is also not included. Or any items not mentioned specifically in tour conditions. They do have a cancellation policy that says that any change to the passenger list without at least 60 days before the trip, the cancellation has to be made under the traveler's account of Educational Destinations online, or you have to email them. And if the cancellation receives 60 days or more prior to the trip's departure, then you will get refunded. But if you don't cancel before this, then you won't be able to get refunded unless you find someone else to take your place and pay the money to go on this trip. And also, some of the cancellations depend on the airfare, the airlines that we use. So thank you guys so much for considering this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to use, for us to make lifelong memories together before we have to go our separate ways. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm sure we do. Dan, are you there? Can you hear? Can we, hold on, Dan. Can we turn the volume up so that we can hear?
Oh, it's better when you get close to the.
I gotta talk into the mic.
Yeah, that's, yes.
Yes.
All right, so thank you guys again for doing the presentation. I do have a couple of questions that I was too, we'll have some as well. So I'll toss them out to you guys, so maybe in advance. We talked about the cost of including the charter services for the buses. Is that just what you guys are paying to be down in Florida? Or does it affect who's gonna be getting you guys back and forth from the school to Logan?
That includes us, any bus that we'll have to take to go anywhere. So including coming back to the school and leaving the school.
Okay, thank you. Another question is, I was looking at, obviously, your ideas around fundraising. Will a part of this be, I know you have, you're going to talk to DC trip individuals, but I'm thinking of our families who may not have the ability to be on a payment plan or funds are a bit of a burden. Do you guys have any ideas about possible sponsorships or other opportunities working with other allies in the community to try to reduce the cost? Because it looks like it's somewhere between, you know, two to three and a half thousand dollars per student.
Yeah, I think I can answer that. I had a conversation with Mr. Looney today all about fundraising. And he, he filled me in on what they do for the DC trip. And he did suggest sponsorships, and he had some good ideas about ways that maybe we could, like, make brochures or go out to the community and ask them if they would sponsor some, some things that we could create to kind of fund this trip. And then, and hopefully, we don't get it to $3,000. We're definitely going to try to keep the cost much lower than that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm starting to look backwards here a little bit. But I saw, obviously, the ratio that you talked about, the 15 to one school ratio. During the times where the park is open, but it's not closed just to students, how would you guys anticipate like, that 15 to one ratio if you have those students who are interested in doing variety of different things? Like, what would be the payment base to ensure that everyone's kind of safe if schools are scattered in the park?
We would probably, before we get there, we would like, make, like, send out a survey of what people are interested in doing what. And based on that, we will assign some chaperones and we will go in groups to different places of the park.
Okay, awesome. So the 15 to one ratio is like, like you said, you would be figuring out who's interested to get their interest. And that means they have a chaperone at each of the kind of stops along the way throughout the park during the day.
Yes.
Okay, and then my final question, I found this all the way to push the floor here, is in the original survey that you guys have, you talked about a couple of the bills that have already come through. Have you been able to get any feedback on that ride? Brian, is it clear that you're not able to, or is it just that you're curious about?
Um, I've talked to a couple of people. Most of them have been just parent approval, them just not wanting their kids to go on the trip. Or, um, yeah, like we were talking about cost wise. So the sponsorship would be a very important part in getting more, um, approval, yeah.
Right, thank you guys. Yeah, just looking at the anticipated payment plan, obviously, twenty twenty five is really a pause, so. I don't know if there are a lot of questions to be raised in that study, if they're working on that. So thank you guys.
Thank you.
Brian, do you have any question? Kathy?
I'm gonna be like Dan, but I do wanna preface, my daughter's in your grade. These opinions are my opinions, not hers, so please don't go to her tomorrow. This is all me, not her. Um, thank you for a great presentation. You guys were really thorough with your information and fact finding. I appreciate that. So thank you for all of the facts. I have a lot of questions and concerns, though. Uh, Dan hit on one of them, mainly cost. This is a very exclusive trip. The cost alone is one of the highest trip costs. I mean, Europe, yeah, but Europe isn't billed as a class trip. You guys are presenting this as the whole class, but even with your response, you only had, I did quick math, and I know there's some math teachers in the room, so hopefully my math's right. But you got about fifty-one percent yes of your class. And that's only with fifty-nine percent of the class responding. So I worry that it's not going to be inclusive of the class. Do you guys have any thoughts on that? Do you, like, I guess that's my number one concern is, how is this inclusive? And then if you're using all your funds for this, how are you doing a senior week at the end of the year as well?
So the funds that we're fundraising right now are separate from the funds that we will use for the Universal trip. And right now, we've already fundraised around like four thousand dollars already for our class, for senior week and other things that will happen senior year. And we will just add even more fundraisers and with our continued like class support with other students, we will be able to participate in more fundraisers.
So, okay, so all of the fundraisers you guys have done since last year, cause you guys have been fundraising like crazy. That's all just for senior week? That's not for this trip at all?
And as soon as we get this approved, then we're going to go forward and like do a lot more fundraisers for this trip specifically.
So you'll be fundraising, then the fundraising will shift and everything fundraising will go to this?
No, we'll do, be doing both. Fundraising for both.
Double up on your fundraising?
Yes.
Okay, that's a lot of fundraising. Um, my other question on the fundraising, I know you were talking to the DC group. Could I ask that maybe you guys consider tweaking it? I feel like, I appreciate that you talked to Mike Looney because your class did fundraising for the DC trip in a terrible way, and I was very not pleased with how that went. So I'm glad you're talking about supplement, you know, putting that towards students who might not be able to afford, because I do feel there's a great deal in your class who cannot afford this trip at this time with these prices. And that's not including airfare or any of the other things that you mentioned, cause that's gonna, I think we're looking, probably in two years, it's probably gonna be over three thousand. I hope not, but I, I'm not optimistic unfortunately on that front. I guess I were, I, I wonder if you would, before you put the funds for fundraising, whatever a student earns goes just to them, and then once they've filled their trip, the excess then goes?
Yes, that's what we've been talking about and what we have also discussed, that if a student does go over and they've already paid their cost, then the extra money will go towards the kids that need it. And we also fundraiser, fundraise extra for the kids that aren't able to pay this, cause we want everyone to be able to go on this trip.
Okay, you talked, oh, sorry.
Uh, I just wanted to add something about the fundraising. The students who show up to the fundraising, that's where those funds are going. If students who sign up for the trip don't show up to these events and don't like participate, then they won't get that, um, those funds to help them.
You talk about the educational opportunities that I didn't see that at all in the itinerary. Are those mandatory? And if so, what day are you planning to put those on your itinerary?
I was gonna say, yes, they are mandatory. They, the students will get to choose which ones they want to do. And we can't put them on the itinerary yet, cause we have to wait to see what the kids want to do. Yes, and they also don't open up to purchase till six weeks before the trip. And also, I didn't answer your question before about the survey. Um, we only put out this recent survey that we have on the slide like two days ago. So with kids, it might take longer to get more responses on it.
But this, but last year when you did the initial, you didn't have any other locations, right? It was just this?
Yes, it was just Universal.
Why not any other locations? Why didn't you maybe put out other options for other kids to consider?
So I'll say, the, the class officers kind of discussed together and came up with this, um, idea. And they talked about it after school with the, uh, when they had their class meeting. And the, the students who attended the class meeting agreed. There's low attendance, though, so it, I would say that probably not everybody had their input included in that decision.
Also, we, I went around and talked to friends and saw, like, and asked them, and I'm pretty sure they did too, asking if other people were interested in going on this trip. And when we had a meeting at, what was it, like, we had like a thing at the end of the year where we went over our schedules and chose our classes. And there we had a class meeting and we presented this idea to our whole class. And we had a lot of people inter- interested in going.
That's Program of Studies Day.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, I'll ask one more and then I'll pass on to someone else. But I guess, I, I gotta go back to the cost. This is a really expensive trip and I, I'm concerned. There's, there are a lot of families in Matchby that even a hundred dollars is a lot. And I guess I'm just, I worry about the equity of the trip. I feel it's a different animal than the Europe trip. Um, I know people compared it to the DC trip too. That one again, to me is way more educational, way more, um, I think beneficial to you as humans and citizens. And this kind of just feels like spring break for high school, which is cool and sounds awesome, and I think it does sound fun. I, I guess I'm just curious, you know, to see, and maybe it's more just a rhetorical question I'm asking here, but I, I worry about the cost. I, I, I just feel like it's gonna exclude a lot of kids in your grade. And I also wonder too, about eighteen year olds on the trip, and they're legal adults at that point. So I, that might be more another question, but I'll, I'll yield the floor. I guess I just wanna put that concern. I'm, I'm really concerned about the financial obligation this is going to put, and the pressure it's gonna put on your classmates who might not be able to afford to go, but don't have the courage to say that to you guys. And I guess that's what I worry about, because there are kids, and you probably know some of them, who just won't be able to go, cause they can't afford it. And I, I worry about that. That's all. So I, whoever else would like to go?
Just one little thing. I think that would be beneficial if we send out another survey. This time, like, the email addresses and things will like, could be like anonymous. And we could have people voice their opinions on it, because I don't, we're gonna have a class meeting, I think it's next Monday, but based on past attendance, I don't think people will come. And people are more likely to check their emails. So I think sending out another survey, this time anonymous, people can share their opinions, what they really think. I think it would be beneficial and we could like get some ideas rolling from there.
Are your class meetings after school?
Yes.
Right, so late bus issue probably is factoring in there, unfortunately.
No, sports aren't, sports aren't an issue, because it's the late bus. Cause sports don't begin until three twenty.
It's definitely a late bus issue.
And the late bus is an issue.
Yep.
Alright, um, I'm gonna have Kelly go next, but, um, while she begins with her questions, Sherry, can you bring up the SNAP survey results? Um, I wanna talk about that in a second. The SNAP survey slide? The one they did the other day? That one?
Oh, SNAP, what's?
It really does sound like a blast, but I kinda have the same concerns that Ms. Lewis does. I went on a trip this summer. These numbers for airfare are not even close to what I paid for one person round trip. This doesn't include bags, if you read it. It's seventy-five dollars a bag. So you're looking at just for a round trip air flight ticket, between six and eight hundred dollars. On top of anywhere from fifteen, uh, fourteen to fifteen hundred dollars. Right there puts it over two thousand dollars. Again, that is, it's costly. And there are a lot of families in this, in this town and students in your class that aren't going to be able to afford this. So that, that sends out a red flag. Again, a bunch of seventeen and eight year, eighteen year olds in Orlando during April vacation. Me personally, no, no. Fifteen students to one person for a chaperone, I don't think that's enough adult supervision. That's just, those are my opinions. I, I agree. If I was your age, this would be so much fun. I get it. But there's just way too many concerns in my head, pricing. And again, kids aren't gonna come forward and say, hey, my parents can't afford this, because it's embarrassing. But to ask a family to come up with two to three thousand dollars to go to Universal Studios for four days, to me is a little much.
With the chaperone issue, I'll get back to the money in a second, but with the chaperone issue, we can always get more chaperones, cause I agree with you, that is a problem, that we should have more chaperones. But once it gets closer, we will be able to see how many people are going, to see how many chaperones we will need. So we can.
Do you know what the ratio of students versus chaperones is for DC?
I don't.
I thought it was ten to one.
So we're going to Washington DC on an educational trip, and there's ten students.
I'm gonna interrupt you on that one for a quick second, though. That's an age thing. Like, you know, I think about Girl Scouts, we have a ratio, and as they get older, you need less adults. So like, that's not so much concerning to me personally, but I understand what you're saying. I'm just, they are gonna be older at that point, you know? It's like eighth graders need more versus high school seniors, you know? Just throwing two cents, like, cause like with Girl Scouts, there is like a safety ratio we have to follow.
Right, and it's just.
Changes as they grow older.
It's, it's just tough. It's, it's tough as, you know, to, I get it. But again, it's, I think in my mind, in my head, it really does come down to the cost. It, it, that's expensive. And there are gonna be families that aren't gonna be able to afford to go on this.
Yeah, I think that some of the fundraising we do, like specifically for Universal, I think we should like have a fund just for the, like, fund for people who like can't go. And maybe like ten of the fundraisers we do, we, like, nobody, like, we can just do volunteer. Like, people can volunteer to go. And the money that we earn from those fundraisers, we can put it into like a separate place, and then people can like, I like apply, I, I can like say, I need help, and the funds that are in that account can go to them. I think that's an I, possible idea. We will make sure that the students know that we're getting this money for them also, so they don't feel like they have to pay all this money. We will tell them that we do have funds. And since we're already doing so good with fundraising for our regular class, if we do end up needing to, we can take some of that money towards this trip.
So, couple of questions. Did I hear correctly that so far your class is fundraised for four thousand dollars for your?
Yes, so far we already have four thousand dollars. And we have a lot.
So, how much do you expect that you would fundraise for this trip specifically?
Yeah, it's specific to the students that actually show up to go to these fundraisers. Because the reason we chose to fundraise this way is to show that if you're willing to go and help your class and fundraise for yourself, then you will get the profit from it. And it will go towards you to show that you actually want to lower your own cost. So that the people that just think, oh, well, I'll get the money anyways, they won't get the money, because they're not showing up. And obviously, I know some people aren't able to show up to these things, so we will take that into consideration.
Alright, that, that's a great answer, but didn't answer the question.
Can you repeat the question?
So. Well, if I think about it, you, you've raised four thousand dollars over the last year and two months, correct?
Yes.
And so you have less than three years to raise the remaining funds for this particular trip, and you're starting from scratch. So what is the, the realistic amount that you think you would have available specifically for this trip? Based on the fundraisers that you're doing without, you know, doing a fundraiser every day?
Um, I think we just can't say, because last year our goal was twenty-five hundred dollars and we went over that. And, you know, even if we had set a goal, we can't really know if we have so many fundraiser opportunities in one year, two years.
And that four thousand dollars is for the whole class, whereas these fundraisers will be specific to the students. So I don't know how they could really answer that realistically.
It's, it's also hard, because throughout the year, we'll be finding different, um, fundraising opportunities. So it's hard to really know, because we don't really know how many fundraising things we're gonna do at the moment, because things come up throughout the year that we can do. Like last year, halfway through the year, we found out about the ten pin thing, where you can go there and they will give you part of the proceeds. So different fundraising opportunities come up all throughout the year, so it's really hard to answer that.
So when you did your survey of the students last year, ninety-one percent were positive that they would like to go on this. And I, I'm assuming that that's the students without the parent approval. Is that correct?
Yes, probably.
Probably.
Which is why.
And now, once again, that SNAP survey that you took the other day, it's now down to eighty-seven percent. And once again, that's just the students expressing their, their opinion without confirming, uh, yes or no with their parents. Do you have any idea how many kids actually go on the, uh, DC trip? What percentage of the class?
That's not really for them to.
I'm just, cause they went.
They're fifteen, Don.
Well, they, they went.
Yeah, but should they know the percentage? I'm just saying, can we remember that we're talking about the students?
So roughly, it was less than sixty, I believe. Sixty out of the class.
Yeah, I was one of the people who didn't go, cause I didn't really have an interest in going. But while I was there, like at school, there were not that many people. In my classes, I had like two other people with me. There were not that many who stayed.
I mean, I think this is a, a very ambitious proposal. And I do share some of the same concerns that have been expressed by other committee members a- about this. I don't think that the participation level that you're thinking about is actually the reality. I may be surprised, but, um, I, I think there's probably a lot that would love to go. I would love to go. But when it comes to, this is going to cost somewhere between two and three thousand dollars for a, a family or for a person to go, I think that makes a, a huge impediment for some people. And how do we deal with that from an equitable standpoint? Even if they are fundraising like crazy, that's a lot to raise, um, for a individual.
Something about the fundraising, last year, we could only do small fundraisers, because not a lot of people wanted to participate in the fundraisers, fundraisers for our class. Like, it was mostly the four of us plus like two people recently for the Cape Cod Marathon.
Like, it was mostly the four of us plus like two people recently for the Cape Cod Marathon. It was, it gave us a thousand dollars for our class. And we had a lot more participation, we had six, sixteen or eighteen people participating. And it shows that the bigger, like, the more amount of people who come, the more amount of money we get. Because we can't sign up for the bigger fundraisers unless we have that participation. And I feel like the universal trip itself will be a big incentive for people to start participating in fundraisers.
Is, is it okay if I just draw up maybe a wish to have a nation? I know that this is a copy for a vote per se for a day or day. Um, but I think in a lot of ways, my point is this was a fabulous first pass at presenting this with some really follow-up questions that we have as a committee. Um, and I'm not making that per se, I know sometimes it's a yes that's in some ways, but that we don't need to per se vote yes or no tonight on whether or not we want to approve this. I, I think it would, um, through the process, this and nothing else, to give up, obviously, these students an opportunity to go back with our concerns and to brainstorm and to problem solve and get more data for us to come back with a follow-up presentation, so that way we can see where we advance with some of the, um, concerns we have around pricing and supervision, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Now, that, that's an excellent point and that was exactly where I was headed next. I do think that there are some concerns that need to be addressed. I don't know what your deadline is, uh, other than your fundraising effort, um, with the travel agency that you're working with. Is there a deadline that's been expressed?
You have a deposit date on here of December or is it January?
Yeah, well, ideally, we would, we would wanted to, like, wanted to know about it in, before December because that's when the first payment plan is. So ideally in November, it would be like the cutoff date, like the end of November.
The payment plan can be adjusted though depending.
Right.
It just might make the payments.
Do you guys have a goal for fundraising on what you wanna raise for this trip?
Well, it's, yeah, it just depends on the person. Because if one event is supposed to give us ten, like a thousand dollars and ten people show up, it would be like a hundred dollars per person. So we can't say, oh, we want sixty thousand dollars, because it just depends on how, like, how many people come and how many they raise themselves.
I think it probably makes sense, um, if the committee so chooses to table this, um, and have you come back, um, in November. That would still give you, um, time before your deadline, um, to address some of the questions and concerns and to, um, try to get more input from your student body. And I would ask, um, also that you think about trying to get not only the student bodies', um, views, but also the parental views supporting those, um, because they'll ultimately would have to sign off, uh, on their travel. Does that make sense for the committee?
Dan beat me to it, but yeah, Brian's.
I think I have, yeah.
Brian, you have something else you wanna add?
Yeah, I just kind of, I really didn't have questions to, because to me, I kind of am in support of your trip. Um, it seems like a no-brainer kinda to me, um, I respect everybody else on the committee and their opinions. Um, I think that you all have been through so much with COVID and I think that you all are gonna learn, um, you know, live and learn. I would never set you up for failure, um, it's a pretty aggressive fundraising schedule. But I've seen people that have ran for positions in this town, you know, fundraised to get themselves elected. And it seems like the community should really be coming behind you all. I understand some of your parents are here, um, I know your mom's a teacher, your dad was on the PTO and, you know, I see the support here as well. Um, and I would really hope that the community could come together to make sure that we can make this happen for you guys. I think that when we talk about the DC trip, we're comparing apples to oranges, because DC is, um, the crime capital. Um, it's not just the capital, it's like a lot of things happen there. Um, and I think that we have to kind of put our money where our mouth is. Because if you have a sixty-day cancellation policy, I don't understand why we couldn't approve it with the stipulation to have you guys come back and check in with us halfway through, to see where your fundraising efforts have gone. Um, and I think that the community will really support you, um, the Southport Falcons, different businesses in town as well, um, and stuff like that. Maybe we could do some Christmas fairs or raffles, um, some shopping sprees. And I think there's a lot of great ideas that you guys have, and if you had that support, I think we could get to that goal. Um, unfortunately, we don't know what that goal is, um, but that's just, you know, where I stand. Um, because I do wanna make sure that you guys can have, um, a great trip, because you guys have been through a lot. And there is, this is educational, I mean, I can't say that everybody that comes before us for a trip, um, and for our permission, gives us something as extensive as you all have done. Um, and I just wanna commend you for your work tonight, and even if it doesn't pass tonight, um, know that, you know, you still have, um, support and people that would be willing to help you. And if you have to come back, please reach out anytime, um, because I do wanna make sure that, you know, we set you guys up, um, for the best things possible to be successful, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other comments by the committee? So, do I have a motion to table this to the? Do you agree with that?
Do you want a motion or do you?
Yeah, I prefer a motion, I guess.
I make a motion to table this to the November, um, school committee meeting for them, for the students of the class of twenty-twenty-seven to, um, address the concerns that were presented tonight. And I'm sure we'll be able to get you that list, so you don't have to re-watch this whole thing all over again.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
If, if Ms. Meniski can't do it, I'll send it to you. But that's my motion.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dan, any further discussion?
Thank you, guys, I, I hope you don't, like, the questions, I think you guys did a great job, I just wanna put that back on the record, thank you. It's just, there's a lot of layers to this trip that we need to deal with.
Dan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Brian?
No.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yeah.
And I vote yes, four positive and one negative. All right, we'll see you.
You did an excellent job.
You guys did a good job, seriously. There's just those concerns, go and, and, yeah, get your classmates and tell them, listen, if this is what we wanna do, then we need to figure out how we're gonna do this. Because like I said, my main concern really is just how much it's gonna cost. Okay, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, uh, is public info on the public, or on the permanent superintendent profile. Do we have anyone here who wanted to make a comment? Don't everyone rush to the, to the chair, please? All right. Glenn, it doesn't look like we have anyone here to give a comment. If you would like to, um, just give a quick update of, and I know this is a little out of order.
I don't have any comments for you, we were here to listen and take notes as we've been doing during the day and will tomorrow and Friday.
Okay, very good, thank you.
That's good, we'll see you, uh, again later this week.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't wanna say that we were, we were searching for a name of, of someone, um, a woman who was a Mashpee delegate to the nineteen eighty-one White House Conference on Aging and couldn't come up with a name, and it was Winifred Hines, Winnie Hines, if that name means anything to anyone. Just continuing a conversation that we had during the day and it came up. So I don't know if anyone remembers Winnie, but she was the Mashpee delegate to the White House Conference on Aging.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, the tribal delegate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business then is approval of the minutes from September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, they're in your packet.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Kathy, second by Kelly. Any discussion? Hearing none, Dan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I vote yes also.
Oh, yeah, he, uh, sent me a note that she's, she was in a lot of pain, so. And I said, is there anything you want me to say at your section? And she said, nothing grand, it can wait.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's probably the briefest update we've had.
Yep.
Especially for me.
Not touching that one. All right, next item of business is the superintendent update.
Yes, um, so I, I actually wanna start with the, uh, with the update from our, uh, PD day, uh, last Friday and the half day on the thirtieth, I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Kanska.
Hello. I was like seeing if the microphone was working. So this year for PD, um, we're doing things a little bit differently and I'm pretty excited about it. Our half days beginning in November are going to be, most of the, most of the members of units A and B are going to make choices about which PD they wanna attend. And the PD that we're offering is being run by our units A and B members as well. So, um, that is starting in November, so we'll have a little more to talk about on that, um, at our next meeting. But for the September thirtieth, first PD day, um, Coombs worked on handwriting without tears. We had, um, the folks from that company come in and I know Mrs. O'Brien said it was an awesome training for all of Coombs. Quashnet worked on, oh, Kalise Wernham, um, began her third year in her residency here with us. So anyone from Coombs or Quash or the middle high school who has not gone through her ten-week course, began that on the thirtieth. And, um, oh my gosh, why can't I remember what else we did? Oh, because we were at Kelvin Oliver, that's why, because I wasn't here, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, how many, um, how many are left to go through Dr. Wernham's program?
At each building, there are several departments at the high school that haven't gone through yet and then anyone new on top of that, so I don't know the exact number. It's gonna be on, it's on vector, but I, I haven't pulled it up. And then with Coombs and Quash, anyone who doesn't, at the Quash, anyone who teaches math is with Dr. Wernham this year, because last year they were doing math. Um, along with any new people from Coombs, who have, uh, ten new people from Coombs, including Mrs. O'Brien, I think, is going to do some of it. Because she missed the year, she, we were doing Coombs when she was at Quash and, and she lets me know that every time that she missed it. The rest of the folks on the thirtieth, Elijah, what did you guys do here? Because we were. Ed's puzzle?
Ed's puzzle.
Yeah. Oh, so Suzie Brooks ran PD over here, okay. No, we pay for that. Oh, the educational one is free, you're right. And then at the middle high school, they went by department and they started the beginning of analysis of data. So that was the thirtieth. The eleventh, um, the reason Elijah, Christine, Dave, a bunch of us were not here for that half day, um, Mrs. O'Brien as well. Kelvin Oliver, who is, um, the person who has trained most of our APs and a lot of our counselors in restorative practices, he was presenting in Rhode Island for, uh, he has a two-day boot camp. So any of the administrators or anyone who does discipline who hadn't attended his boot camp, went down to Rhode Island, um, the thirtieth and the first and attended that. It is, it is, it's amazing and he talks about restorative, not discipline, but restorative practices. And, um, because so many of us have been, now everyone's been trained, we felt like we needed the district to hear his message. And so he came on the eleventh in the morning and he worked with the entire district. And then in the afternoon, he had a small subgroup, anyone who'd been to his boot camp, except me, went upstairs in the library of the, uh, of the middle high school and did case consultation with him. I think, um, his message is really about, um, oh, gosh, it's the three pillars and it's the colors and there, it's intent, um, there's a consequence with accountability equals, oh, what's the last thing? Oh, my gosh, I really should have prepared my brain better for this, but I'm tired. Basically, what it comes down to is that when we talk about restorative practices, a lot of people think that means no consequences and it doesn't. In fact, consequences are a very big part, but there's accountability that has to happen with it and repairing of the relationship. So an example might be if a student does something that's in the code of conduct, that's not, um, allowed in the code of conduct and they are, let's say, sent to the office, there's going to be a learning component to that response. So an accountability project of some sort that ties to the infraction. And then there is a repair of the relationship with, let's say, the teacher and the student. They're gonna sit down and get to a place where they can both look at each other. And then there's a consequence, which might be a structured day, which we've been doing at the elementary schools for a couple of years now. Where the student comes, they're entitled to learn, they're entitled to eat and they're entitled to go to the bathroom. But every other part of their day, we're on top of, um, with that accountability project and potentially a character connection, which is where they work on that accountability piece. So he does a much better job than I do at six, uh, fifty-eight PM explaining how that system actually changes behavior. Because right now, if you have an infraction and you have, let's say, a zero tolerance policy, which we don't, and the kid goes out on suspension, when they come back, we're all surprised that the behavior happens again. And it's designed to happen again, because we didn't teach the skill that was lacking. So that was the morning and then most of the, um, like I said, administrators were there for the afternoon. The rest of us in the afternoon did my Super Bowl, day-to-day, you know how I feel about it. So normally in October, we do a full day of day-to-day, but since we couldn't, uh, because it really was important for Kelvin Oliver to come, um, we did a half day of it. So teams, um, everybody met with me in the auditorium of the high school and then they went off into PLCs and went through the data, uh, protocol of looking at MCAS, Access, STAR, all of the data that we look at. You'll have reports on that in AP, I'm gonna talk about November and MCAS in December, so, um, more to come. But I did not miss day-to-day. So very excited. I mean, people are probably so sick of me saying it's my Super Bowl, but it truly is just my favorite, you know why? Because it actually changes outcomes for kids. So yes, I get excited because it's fun and I like color coding and all of that, but it really, you hear the teachers say concrete things they're gonna do as a result of looking at that data. So they did spend, I don't know if they loved it as much as I did, but they did spend the afternoon doing that, so that's our PD update.
All right. So, um, you know, and I know some of the things we're gonna say the committee is aware of, because I've updated them, but just for the community, just finished, uh, the first round of, uh, my school residency tour. Uh, that's where I've spent, uh, days in each building, uh, with the kids and the teachers, meeting with them, getting a feel for the building. Um, one of the things that I did do at the high school with the days that I spent up there was kind of recruit some extra people for the superintendent advisory committee. Also, um, have some volunteers from the Quashnet, and so we're gonna have, I'm gonna have two groups, uh, going forward this year. In, uh, in, in November, I'm hoping to, uh, to meet with them during, during lunch and it'll be pretty informal, but just to hear what, what their experience is and, and learn from them, you know, hear that student voice. We will be recording the next podcast, looks like on Monday. That will be, um, focusing on school culture builders. It will be, you'll hear a little bit more about the Falcon Five at, at Coombs. Uh, the positive behavior structures have been put in at the Quashnet and peer leaders at the high school, so look for that. Hopefully coming out the end of next week. And then, uh, probably in early November, uh, we're gonna try to engage parents with a coffee with the superintendent. We will be picking dates for that, that will be coming out as well. We just heard the professional development update, just real quick, you do have the student enrollment numbers here. These reflect the October numbers that the state pulls for our chapter seventy, uh, uh, chapter seventy funding. Uh, and you can see, uh, this year that we are slightly up from, um, well, actually, no, sorry, I'm looking at the run number. We are slightly down, um, from fourteen fifty-two, uh, last year, I'm not quite sure where the, those are the October one numbers, it looks like we're about fourteen oh-three. So difference of about forty-nine students or so. So, um, that is, that personnel update is on page thirty-two. Uh, you can see that we, uh, were able to secure Winnie Johnson Graham as our Indian education coordinator. Uh, we have hired, uh, three kind of long-term substitutes for people who are, have been out for various reasons. We are still looking for an English language teacher long-term sub and a paraprofessional long-term sub at the high school, both those positions at the high school. And if you know anybody, we would love to, um, have you apply, just go to the website. Uh, the athletic program, uh, you do see the update there, you can see that. You can see that the games that are coming up are fewer and fewer the next week or two are going to be senior nights, those were identified on that as well, in case you would like to come and see our folks on the courts and on the fields.
I've got a question about that.
Yep.
Have we been cleared? Do you know from the health department?
We are still, we asked that question last week, we are still on, we haven't had that hard freeze. So we are still on a non-dusk thing, so games. And this is something everyone out there needs to pay attention because the problem with changing the game times and with the lack of officials and referees, sometimes that causes the game having to move from a Friday to a Saturday or vice versa. So please kind of look for those. The We Are Mashpee report is at your place. One of the questions that I did receive from the community was about the bus that we are refurbishing. That bus, and that's going to be the rolling We Are Mashpee store, am I correct with that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Where's that going?
Where, right now-
Wherever we park it.
Wherever you want to park it.
So, I only, I didn't mean to, when I was, I'm like off my rocker tonight. No, I'm tired.
You need to sleep.
I do need to sleep, but there, it's, it would open up so that we can sell out of it. So it would be refurbished so that it is a storefront.
It would be at like events.
But it would be at a, like if you go by the Tuitt Center for the Arts-
Yeah.
And you see their bus, it's sort of a similar concept to that.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Can I back up for one quick second?
Yep.
Sorry, on the personnel updates, can we start listing that late bus driver? I know it's not necessarily us, but can we just put it on there so that it's known that we still need a late bus driver?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Maybe people will see that and apply.
Do you have that, Sherri? Yep. Yeah, that is, yeah, late bus driver for the high school.
For the high school.
For the high school.
Yes, we have Quash.
We have a Quash late bus driver?
Yes.
Yep, Quash and Coombs. So the bus is currently at Cape Cod Tech, that's who's going to do a lot of the maintenance. There is some debate right now whether we're going to paint or rap or something like that and that is a cost that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to cover. And you can see volunteer engagement. I was able to visit Southport last week and that was a great experience. People there, the energy and enthusiasm there, again, it was just absolutely infectious. And you can see the posts, the social media posts on the, on the, on the next page. I am giving Consuelo a hard time that her YouTube number's going to go up because of the podcasts, we'll see about that. I do want to mention, we did meet with the education department from the tribe on the 8th. That was a lot of organization and talking about logistics and how to increase our opportunities to work together. We started planning for Native American Month in November and we are meeting next Tuesday to finish that, but that is well in the works. Upcoming events, I would like to make sure that everyone out there is, has highlighted, you can see on our calendar here, they're in yellow, but we do have early release on Thursday, the 24th, so that's next Thursday.
Only at the elementary.
Only at the elementary schools for parent-teacher conferences. Also Tuesday, the 29th, and again, that's only at the elementary schools. And then Monday, the 4th, is early release for all schools for parent-teacher conferences, so.
All right, I'm going to interrupt you for one second on this.
Yep.
Mr. Switzer, so the PTO book fair at Quashnet normally coincides with parent-teacher conference, but it is not this year?
No, the sales haven't been great.
Okay.
So the PTO just met last week, breakfast on something, I guess they've done the past, we do a morning breakfast one of the days.
Oh, I love to remember.
That was always best.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so instead of having, it's just based on why it's the last year doing, we still have the dates for their after conferences and the last day, we are going to do a morning breakfast. Donuts, donating a ton of donuts, that was great. So we're only going to call something really huge that I need to come up with, we have a dog tree, it's really nice, like, and at 8:00 AM we're going to open our doors, families can come, get donuts and shop at the bookstore.
Okay, all right.
We're going to have that, and we will still have a family time, so hopefully we'll get more people that way.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't really think, stop that, not used to like.
Right, that works.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I was at that, at that discussion and you can, with the PTO and they had a, like you said, a perfectly, you know, good rationale for making that change. And I think it would be easier for parents in general to get their, you know, if they're going on a Monday or half-day, they're probably between watching their own kids and getting to the parent-teacher conference, really isn't time to shop at the bookstore, so that's Saturday. It's November 16th, correct, Elijah?
Yeah.
The 16th of November?
I think it's November 6th.
Yeah.
The 16th is, what, actually?
The 6th, the breakfast is going to be on the 6th, I believe.
It says Wednesday the 6th, Saturday the 16th.
That's for the Coombs. That's the book fair itself at KCC.
Oh, I think there's a-
Oh, okay, okay, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, so Quash book is the week before.
I'm still working on that.
Yeah, okay.
We just got our PTO eventually more than I just turned back to the day and so I got to throw that up.
Yep, okay, but we'll get that up.
That works.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to also do a quick shout-out.
I see what, sorry, I suppose you're looking at dates of breakfast, show that's meeting all the dates of the postman.
Okay.
So these could be changed, the calendar.
Yeah, we will, we will update that.
I just want to say too, if any of the school committee members, like seeing the dates, the mock interviews for the seniors, super awesome volunteer opportunity and I'm really excited because it's the same morning as the MASCE conference and I took those days off, so I get to do interviews this year.
Yay!
Very excited about that, I love the interviews.
Yep, all right, so that is it from, from my chair.
One, one request for the next meeting, if you could please provide an update on the school choice program. I'm particularly interested in knowing how many of the slots we have filled?
Oh, we can tell you that now.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I saw the, I thought I saw the numbers in this packet.
The numbers are here and you want to know what's not, what's empty?
Yeah.
I think it's only one or two grades, but Sherri has it.
Yep.
1, 5, 3, 5, and 1, 5, 5, and 6. What are 3 is?
5, 6, and 8.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I guess I'm going to put on my Director of Finance hat. The first, you know, is the budget to actual. You will notice on there that there is some negatives showing up. One is for technology, curriculum instruction technology, and that just does not reflect the offset for school choice at this point in time. The other one is under special education, education expenses, and that $65,000 represents the, the school psychologist consulting that we're looking at hiring and basically, at some point, we're going to need to do possibly, because we're still, there's a few other things in the, in the air right now, but possibly do a budget transfer from salary to that line to eliminate that. But other than that, we are in the black, as they like to say. Was there any other questions, the budget to actual? Okay, and then the revolving account, you can see we've had a couple expenses under athletic gate and school choice and then food service. And basically what is happening in food service is that the, the money from September has not all come through the system yet, that's why that is off, but that will be rectified going forward.
And I see that we were given a handout regarding food services and the level of participation by school.
Yep, yep.
It's nice to see a 71% participation level at the high school.
Yep.
Amazing.
Yep, so. Okay, and then there is another sheet in your packet that has school choice revenue, just so you can see where the expenses are, have been going there. There is still a healthy balance in there as well.
How is the HVAC working at Coombs School? Is it?
Yeah, so this is actually, and hopefully Mary-Kate can help me a little bit, we are actually, we're ahead of where I thought we were going to be months ago, where we were talking about fixing the ventilation duct, like over the December break. That has now, was actually fixed this past weekend, the weekend before?
This past weekend.
The day of the 11th, when we had the professional development.
Right.
We all, we all were at the high school, so the school wasn't available. So all the contractors came in and they had a punch list and they were going through the whole school. We're not completely done, there's still work to be done.
Right, this, right. There are, yeah, there are minor things that are kind of left over. We do have the exhaust fans installed, train will be returning for the technology integration. They didn't have the right license when they showed up on the 11th, but there was something about finding the right kind of card on our side, so that should be able to happen quickly. And again, they would come after school is closed in the afternoon. They're planning on coming back early on Tuesday to complete the condensate pump work. There was a couple trial fixes and I think they figured out what is going to work, but they're going to come back on Tuesday. So it's looking like by the beginning of November, we could be done, which I think everyone would be celebrating. And that would be about a month and a half ahead of what I thought it was going to be the end of August, so. Right, yeah.
Although when I walked into Mrs., the other Mrs. O'Brien's room a few months, like a month ago, it was so lovely and cold and it was right next to the room that I used to volunteer in. That was the reason I was so obsessed with getting Coombs done first, because it was sauna, it was Mary Crimmins' older.
I was going to say, was it Mrs. Crimmins' older? I remember parent-teacher con, that, that's an indelible-
Yes, it is awful, so.
That was, that was a very hot person.
It's definitely-
Yeah, it definitely is improved.
It's so much better.
We have seen, you know, thanks to the supervision of the DPW and the work of this project, this person managing the project, we've seen a definitive improvement in actualization of a lot of the punch list items, so. Well, I'm not going to say we're there yet, but I am cautiously optimistic, but that by the time we meet in November, we'll be talking about the end of the project. I'll come with it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. So that would be the Director of Finance report, unless there's any questions from the committee.
One thing that I think is missing here is the FY26 budget.
Oh, okay.
Which also relates into the finance working group. So if we could-
Yep.
Can you report some of those, but I will tell them.
Yep.
Okay, so we will provide that, I guess.
At the next meeting.
We'll get that sent out to you and then we'll go over it at the next meeting.
Yep, it has, it has been, it was put in, it's submitted to town, that first, that first budget, October 1st.
Right, which is the deadline.
Yep.
Which I guess is kind of skipping then to the finance working group that Kelly and I met with Ash, with the finance director and with the superintendent to go over the proposed budget for FY26. We had a few questions and I'm trying to recall the relative percentage, I believe it was about 4% or 1.5% or something like that, was a healthy increase over where we are. Obviously 80% of that is contractual based. We will have more questions and more opportunity to get into the details as that rolls now from being the obligation to have that submitted by October 1st, so at that point, it's still the superintendent's proposed budget and then the committee can dig into it and determine what they want to move forward with for FY26. Okay, and we'll vote on that, I believe, end of January.
Yes, you have the hearing at the beginning of January and then you vote at the end of January.
Any questions on that? Dan, you're still there?
I am though.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I didn't forget about you. All right, next item on the agenda then, under subcommittees, is the Mass resolutions. There was a Google survey that was sent out to everybody and Brian and Kelly, I will let you guys take it from here.
So we did meet, one of the recommendations was to send out this survey so that it can kind of expedite this process rather than spending some time on it. Our recommendation at the time was to look at the resolutions that were being proposed with the expiring resolutions. We were kind of in support of approving them because they were previously approved and they are expiring. So that was our recommendation and then based upon everybody's input into the Google form that was sent out by Sherri, it looks like majority is in favor of all of them. It looks like there's a couple maybe that maybe two people might have opposed, so I guess if there's questions, my recommendation would be to approve it as presented.
I agree, Brian.
And I agree with, I would say this is all.
So is that a motion, Brian?
Sure, I make a motion to approve the MASCE resolutions as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, any questions or comments?
I think, I just had a question.
You had a question on the mandatory recess? Is that the one you had a concern about?
No, I have no concern about that.
For adults?
I was, I was more, I was-
I think I probably know because it wasn't inclusive enough from my perspective, but so.
I was more looking at the tax season, so based on town valuations, but I just wonder on the Cape how that will impact us where a lot of our communities are, have a higher percentage of seasonal residents or non-moting taxpayers or however you want to call them, but.
Personally, I don't know how that would even work.
Yeah, I was a little scratching my head at too, but I have a feeling that applies more to regional and school districts, where it might have one town valued a little higher than the other, but.
Once again, I always believe in being aspiration. All right. If there are no further questions or comments, we have a motion on the floor to approve all of the resolutions, both current and expiring, that we will review for Mass. Dan, how do you vote?
I go yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I go yes, so let's see.
Mr. Chair, do we need, we voted, I'm blanking now and I know we have the minutes, but-
We did vote.
We did vote, okay, nevermind, sorry, I was wrong. I guess I just need to sign this then, Sherri, is that it?
Yeah.
Need Bonnie's assignment?
All right, next item of business, share out on the bullying prevention and intervention plan, the community forum that was held on October 1st.
I'll just give my opinion, honestly, and now as a school committee member, I will give my opinion as a parent and a member of this community. I was not very happy with the attendance of what we got. It was a lot of empty chairs and I know that the people in this community care, but you got to show up. There was a lot of information that was presented, a lot of, you know, legal information that was presented. I thank Mashpee TV for recording it so people can watch it. We took students to do childcare so that parents could attend, so they would, and we still had, I think, 10 community members that showed up. It was more staff and admin and school committee members than- It was more staff and admin and school committee members than residents and, you know, stakeholders of our town. So I, that's just my opinion as a resident, as a parent, and it just was a little disheartening.
Okay. Who else?
Some of the feedback I got was we were still a little behind on the notification of the presentation. And I don't fault anyone for that, I think it was partially our fault for kind of not giving the answers we needed to give timely enough. But that was one, I heard that comment from three different people, which I appreciate and I can understand. I mean, having kids and being a parent, you're going in fifty million directions. It was around dinnertime, maybe next time we offer dinner, I don't know. But it, I still think it was a valuable presentation. I'm glad it is available online to be watched. I wish that Mashpee TV could tell us how many times people have watched it. Maybe we go onto the YouTube channel and check. You know, just out of curiosity to see if it has had, I know it's been shared online as well. So I have seen people sharing it to various social media sites, so that was a little encouraging. I felt that the discussion afterwards was beneficial. I say it every time, we're only as good as the information we have. So hearing from the parents that did show up, I found to be very helpful to understand some of their struggles that they've gone through. You know, and hearing, kind of, you know things are going on, but you don't always know to what extent, so I found that to be helpful. I think that our administration team did an amazing job of explaining supports that are in place, explaining the policies and the procedures that they use in the schools to help mitigate some of these instances and aggressions and things that happen on a day-to-day basis. I think that part was, was wonderful. And if you weren't able to come, I really do highly recommend watching it because it, it was very helpful. Do you have that number?
Yeah, forty new so far.
Okay, so, a little better than the attendance in the room, but still kind of, we've got fourteen hundred students, give or take a few. So some of them might have siblings, so knock that number down a little. But I guess you could take that either way, that some parents aren't as concerned about it or feel that the school district is doing a good job. But I do think that information is still very helpful, so thank you for organizing it. And everyone who was there, appreciate all of you, so thank you.
I guess my input and feedback would be that I think that if we're gonna sponsor events as a school committee, it would really be great for us to all be on the same page. I know that, you know, some of us couldn't make it that evening and majority of everybody else was there. But if we know that one of our members wasn't gonna be around, I think that we should plan accordingly. And then I also feel as if like, last time when we were talking about the flyer and stuff and, you know, people were looking for direction, I kind of wanted us to take ownership of that because I don't think that it's on the staff when it's a school committee-sponsored event. I think that we should really step up in that place. And I do think the staff and the administration were trying to help us, but I really want us to take the ownership. Anytime that we sponsor an event or anything going forward, I think that like we should all step up and all pitch in individually and be a little bit more active, you know, in that space rather than kind of taking a backseat. But I also think that there's another bite at the apple because we will have to update the bullying prevention plan. We will have to have public input and a hearing and things like that. I think that the further out that we are from that with updating the plan, if we can get those dates now and solidify a lot of that stuff through the policy subcommittee or other groups, I think that we could really get the word out and get a better participation and look at some of those barriers. So I think that we live and we learn from different examples and things along the way. But I just wanted to kind of put that back on us as a committee because I do appreciate everyone's effort. But I don't think that it falls strictly on the administration and the staff and the support that we have. And that would be my own takeaway.
All right. Dan, do you have any comments?
No comments, just unfortunate on my end, not able to attend because the family travels. You know, definitely something that is important to our community, wish I could personally be a part of. But I do hear the rest of the committee members and, you know, feels this is another opportunity that we take it to work on. Obviously supporting our families and helping better educate them. And as Brian said, I think we just continue to take bites of that apple and figure out how we look at the information out and hear how the community can personally adjust to it, so thank you guys.
Yeah, I think unfortunately we did have fewer people attend than was hoped, than we were hoping to. As Brian stated earlier, there will be other opportunities for people to participate in there, in this. I think the information is extremely valuable. It is out there on YouTube for people to be able to watch and to be able to gather that and hopefully they'll feel that they can participate in it more in the future. One thing that would be, at least from my perspective, be useful information is if we're able to somehow share with the committee incidences, not, obviously we have to follow confidentiality, but if we're able to share the number of incidences.
I can get that right now.
Of bullying.
Oh, bullying, there have been no reports or no findings of bullying this school year, no findings.
I think we definitely need to be clear on our terminology of what we're requesting.
Is that what you were asking for?
Well, I'm, incidences of, well, one, bullying is definitely something that there's documentation supporting. But I think there's underlying issues where things have been raised and maybe it didn't come to a finding.
That's not the question you asked, though. You asked how many incidences of bullying, so.
I was using spaghetti.
Across the district, since the beginning of school year, there have been, I'm just looking to see if there's any, there's been some school rules stuff, some insubordination stuff, disorderly conduct, but there have not been interpersonal things put on power school at this point.
That have been reported.
That, that's what I have access to.
Okay.
How do we, I know this is a people thing, honestly, but how do we make sure that when stuff is happening, that the staff is reporting it? I think maybe that's a conversation for the next school committee meeting with the principals so they can speak to what's happening in their buildings because the staff are reporting it. And, you know, Bonnie Brady, our principal at the middle high school, is sick and isn't here. And I think it's, everybody's sick, I know, it's disgusting. She, I would really want the principals to have the opportunity to respond to that. And I just think tonight's probably not the night. But if you want more information, I think it's a good idea to have all three of them speak to that.
Hope, I personally like your suggestion and if you could frame the topic in a more concise manner.
Than you did.
Than I did, I would appreciate that. So they know what to expect.
I think probably the superintendent and you two can, you know, if we have an idea of what we think you're saying, he can run it through your lens and make sure it's what you're saying.
Are we becoming a Don Whisperer?
I mean, do you speak to a Don?
I've been whispering and muttering for a long time.
But you know, there's like class cuts on here, there's things like that that are not relevant.
Right, yeah.
Unfortunately, not everyone speaks my language, so.
We're gonna offer Don as a world language next year, for credit. All right.
Clearly English is not my first sign language. All right, any, any other questions or comments on that subject? All right, hearing done, we'll move on then. Next item is in regard to the superintendent's timeline. You have in your packet the fundamental timeline, just to give you an update. And I believe, and Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong, that the committee is receiving copies of all of the meetings that Glenn is. Has that been shared with the entire committee? Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, just make sure. I, I thought that was the case, but if not, then I dropped the ball on sharing that. Glenn is meeting at each of the schools, has set up times to meet with members of faculty, with members of the union and so forth and so on. So this week has been really his first active week on that. Also, and Brian, I'm not sure if it's been finalized, in regard to having a discussion with the tribe at our meeting next week, next Wednesday, in regard to both the school committee sharing and with the tribal leadership sharing regarding the next superintendent profile. So I think that will be an interesting discussion and Glenn will be there to take notes from that conversation. Okay? Obviously, we're in October and we're not where I thought we would be in October. We are running a little behind, but I still think we will, we will catch up on that. At our next meeting, hopefully we'll be at a point where, and I really do think the committee needs to give thought in regard to the makeup of the search committee so that we can have a fruitful discussion regarding that. And hopefully be at a point where we can vote on getting that makeup formalized because it will take a couple weeks to get people to submit letters of interest from the general public if the committee is going to include the general public, which I'm assuming will. Any questions on the search? All right, hearing done. New business, based on the trip to Universal Studios that the Class of 2027 presented, I ask that we poll and present to the committee, just to refresh everyone's memory, the relevant policies that would be guiding or should potentially be guiding our decisions in that process. From a time perspective, if the committee wants to just take those under advisement and review prior to the meeting at, in November, I'm fine with doing that. We don't have anything to vote on regarding that. But if you have any questions you want to bring up, maybe it's good time to raise those.
You read my mind. I guess my question is, and I'm looking over the packet, there isn't a limit or a mechanism to ensure that there's equity for all clubs to fundraise? I guess one of my concerns too with some of the fundraising that's happened in the past is one group will monopolize all the events where potential fundraising could happen, such as concerts, sports events, theater productions, and it's the same group at every single thing. I don't feel that that's fair to the other, like the theater club should run the concession stand at the play. That money should go to the theater club, that's just my thought on it. And I understand it's more of a first come, first served, approved by the superintendent. I feel that, and I said this in the past, that there's a lot of fundraisers that go on. And some of them are a little bit more successful than others, some of them are a little bit more equitable than others. And I know fundraising isn't necessarily equitable, but I think sometimes it's a hard sell when you've got a ninety dollar shirt, for example, that only comes in three sizes, that you really can't justify, like it, how do you get a kid to go out and be like, hey, will you buy this ninety dollar shirt? Like, some of them I, I feel are a little, I don't know, I guess I just, I don't know if we need to refer this to the policy subcommittee to review, to maybe look at potentially editing or taking that into consideration because while there are some groups that are much more ambitious than others, I feel that some of those groups don't even get the chance to put in for a fundraiser because somebody else has already planned the whole year out and has six fundraisers planned. And then they put in for all six, they get approved for all six, and then nobody else can fundraise because how do you pick between two school groups at a band concert? You can't, you know, like, I'm using band just because band geek here, like, I'm thinking, you can't, you're not gonna spend at all the table. Maybe you are, if you're generous, but I guess that's my concern, is how are we ensuring that all groups are able to fundraise? I understand, again, some are more ambitious, but I, I don't know if we need to refer this to the policy subcommittee for review. That's, that's my thoughts on this.
Well, one of the concerns I guess I have is not all fundraising events are created equal. So, for example, I have attended in the past the fundraising that the band does, where they bring in and have done the shows.
Great concerts.
And those are sold out and those tickets are not cheap. But they sell out every one of those seats for those performances and that generates a significant amount of funds for the band program, which is greatly appreciated. So if we say, well, you can, you're limited to the number or size, I'm not sure how, how you get equity, equity in number or equity in.
I think more equity in number, like I think if your group is allowed four fundraisers a year or that's one per quarter or something, you know, like, then you can do whatever you wanna do. If you wanna sell those ninety dollar shirts, sell the ninety dollar shirts. Do I think it's a great fundraiser personally? No, but I'm not the deciding person and I'm not decided if I don't want to. That's the great thing about that. But I do think having one group monopolize all opportunities can be difficult. And I think it does take away because, you know, the theater kids, they're focusing on learning their lines right now. They're not necessarily thinking about what they're gonna sell during intermission of the play to raise money for the next play. And, you know, that's not something we really budget a lot for, I would like to see that changed. But again, realistically, it's not something we throw a lot of money into. So those fundraisers do help those groups. I mean, you got the First Aid Club, they, they fundraise and do, I mean, they know they do their blood drives, but there's other clubs out there too that I think could benefit from, you know, you get, you can pick like two sports events and two non-sports events a year or something. Like if we kind of put some more parameters on it and, and I, maybe I'm being too rigid, I don't know.
Can I ask a question, is that okay? Or make a suggestion maybe? If it is gonna go to the policy subcommittee, which it may very well need to, can we make sure that Principal Brady is there? Because I think so much of this is related to the middle high school. And I think there may be procedures in place that maybe we don't know about that are happening or not, or it might be a procedural issue and not a policy issue, but I just think she needs to sit at the table, if that's cool.
I have no problem.
I, I think that is a fantastic recommendation. And I think it also makes a difference between whether it's a, like a Falmouth Road Race program.
Yep.
Or is it, you know, selling snacks.
Baked goods at the, yeah, right.
Exactly.
Yeah, and so if, if you say it's quantity, once again, not all events are created equal.
No, but you can qualify the quantities and I think by saying this many school-sponsored events, this many community, you know, like there are ways, I think, to word it, but I don't know, that's.
To Hope's recommendation, I would love to hear what the criteria is that's utilized by, well, ultimately right now it's the superintendent, but I'm sure it's based upon the recommendation of the building principal, correct?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it gets filtered that way first.
So.
Right.
I'm giving Bonnie a lot of work tonight, I don't know if you noticed.
She's not here today.
Exactly!
She will never get, she will never get sick again.
That's what happens when you don't show up. So do we want to send it to the policy subcommittee? Or do we want to have the principals come and really answer our questions?
She doesn't need to come, I mean, if she wants to email us the answer, I'm fine with that. And then at our next meeting, decide if we needed to go to, or based on the response, can we refer that?
Yeah, I think we'd wanna know clearly what your question is to make sure, like.
I'd like to know what her policy for approval is, like.
The process.
The process, yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay, sorry, I'm bleeding. Keep going, you punched yourself.
What, what's the decision criteria?
Right, yes, yes.
That's really what I think we're asking.
I mean, we've all seen the form that they fill out, or if you haven't, there's, I know there's a form they fill out and the advisor or teacher, whomever is helping the students with it, has to fill it all out. I know it goes to the principal, I guess it's then a question of, you know, do you keep track of how many times they've been submitted?
Exactly.
Is there a timeframe of, or a window, like, those types of procedural questions, I think, are what I'm looking for personally.
Yeah, I mean, is it first come, first served, is it?
As far as I know, it is first come, first served, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if we can get those questions answered, I think they'll make it a lot easier for us to.
All right, let's put that on the agenda then.
Sherry, do you mind emailing Bonnie to ask her? Thank you.
All right. Are there any other items that need to be brought forth to the committee that we were unaware of before we started this meeting? Dan?
Sorry, couldn't remember a public meeting for a second and a half, let me come.
Is, any other items that you need to bring to the committee?
Never done that before.
Okay.
I just want to send, and I, I hope I'm speaking on, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm, I'm assuming the rest of the board, but our condolences to our colleagues over in Monomoy who lost, tragically lost a preschool teacher in a house fire the other day. So I just want to send them our thoughts as they go through that very hard time of processing and going through the grief process for that loss. I understand she was a very loved preschool teacher and.
He was at the fire unit?
Yes.
Yeah, her husband was a Dennis police officer.
So again, just wanted to send our condolences to, to that community and and her family, yes.
Very well put. Anything else? All right, we do have a brief executive session on the agenda that we will cover. Dan, do you intend to try to participate in that?
Fine, I'll be here in a minute.
Well, first, let's make a motion to adjourn our public meeting and enter into executive session.
You have to read the whole thing.
Yes, yes.
You have to read the whole thing.
Oh, okay. We make a motion to adjourn a public meeting and enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, 30A S1, S21A2, to conduct negotiations with non-legal personnel and not reconvene in open session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Dan, how do you vote?
I go yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly? And yes, unanimous, thank you.